I agree everybody. This call is meeting to order at seven PM on Monday, March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Then I will call together, call to order the county Board of Supervisors at seven PM on March seventeenth. And if we could all rise, we've got a flag up high to do a pledge of allegiance. Angie, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
I will be glad to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks everybody for being here tonight. Always good together with all of our county folks here. Um, thanks to the nutrition group for Friday dinner. Still not sure how I'm supposed to eat all the brownie right here. Might have to take some nap breaks in the middle of the meeting, but I'll get through there. Um, so our first item of discussion is a video tour of Christiansburg High School. We had, we hoped for art ha- tour and all that stuff. Hopefully it'll come at some point, but we got a video for tonight.
Alrighty, hey, good afternoon, y'all. I'm just-
Is that not coming through?
Crank it up a little bit.
I wasn't listening.
Just to show you a little bit about the progress of our project here.
Good afternoon, y'all. I'm just here to show you a little bit about the progress of our project here at Christiansburg High School. It's a little bit breezy and windy. We're going for the like San Diego feel. I just wish it was a little like warmer right now. But this is the main entrance where our students will come in. Um, as they come in through this hallway, you would take a right um to go into our main office. But before we do that, I'm gonna walk you down here and show you our cafeteria area first. So students would enter through this way. Um, I'm gonna call this the large breezeway. And then as they come in, um, if you look here to the left, you're gonna see this really large room that is gonna be our new cafeteria space, which we are thoroughly excited about. And, and the biggest thing we're excited about is guess what? We got windows. So we actually get some vitamin D and daylight each day. So this is gonna be great for our students, great, great for our staff, great for everybody um that's coming in our building. So as you come out of the cafeteria, we're actually gonna take um a walk into our hallway right here. This is going to be one of our academic hallways. So one of the key things you'll notice first is that we're gonna have a lot more room in our hallways as they come in. Thank you, excuse us. Um, we'll walk down this way a little bit. You're gonna get to see our new bathroom area that we have. Um, this is the more open concept that I think you all have heard about when you, um, when the project was being presented. So this will be open um and visible, but there will be single-use restroom stalls, floor-to-ceiling. Within this area, students will use the sink areas here, which hopefully will minimize some of the issues that we've had in bathrooms, and we will have the new vape detectors um as well. So we're gonna go kinda back this way real quick, and we're gonna look at the main office area. We will enter in, I'm gonna go this way. Sorry, we're gonna go in this way first, my bad. This is actually gonna be our clinic. Um, so we have a much bigger space than we're used to. Um, this will be the office. We'll have some place for um our nursing cots and beds over here to the right. Um, as you walk back into this area, we'll have something we've never had before, which is a, a shower and separate bathroom space in case we need that for a variety of reasons. Um, we'll also have a, a file room and then another room where um if she needs to do any type of like one-on-one um observations with the students or checked in with the students, she can do that privately in the back left. So we'll come out this way. And we come out this way, huh, we get a little bit of heat, a little bit of warmth here. This is gonna be our main office space. So they would enter through that wooden door um right here. We've got a small conference room, and then down this hallway, um, we have our SRO office. And our mailbox room where teachers can get their mail and do a little bit of other work items that they need to, to do. So now I'm gonna walk you down this hallway, and we'll look at the admin suite. As you come down here, every one of the spaces on the right is um one of our assistant principal spaces or bookkeeper space. Um, so again, they get some nice windows. We get some spaces that are a lot better right now than our temporary space. We also have some new bathrooms here, loving the subway tile. As we come here to the end, um, the principal's office is here in the corner. Um, it also has its own bathroom accessible from, from this office as well. Um, what's really cool about the space is when you come out of the admin suite, um, we have this nice staircase um that goes straight up to the counseling suite. Um, so we have really quick access. Um, we can get students back and forth from those spaces if we need to, and also in a private manner, so that, that really helps us a lot as well. So we're gonna kinda go back out of the admin suite, and we'll walk down and look at one of our classrooms um real quick, just so you can get a visual of what that looks like. Got some extra storage spaces here. This will be our ISS room here to the right. Again, it's kinda, it's, it's more private. It's back here away um from other spaces, and we have very direct access from the main office to get there um or move kids back and forth from those spaces. So loving the room here in the hallways, a lot of space here. Um, classrooms are, are much bigger than what we are used to. Um, we'll take a look at one of those in here. Um, the other big addition that we love as well are the windows, just being able to see some daylight. Um, is just something that is welcomed here for our students and our staff here at CHS. So we'll have whiteboards up here in the front um of the room. Um, where Mr. Webb is, is looking right now. We'll also have a video board up there as well. Um, so we're just, we're extremely excited about the space we're gonna be able to offer our students um here at the high school. Much different, much improved than what we've normally had. So what we can do, we can take another quick glimpse of the hallway. All those classrooms look the same. If I also look up on the wall on the left, we have some digital clocks that are gonna be here um in our hallways that we have not had either. So that will be a great way for our students to know what time it is and when they need to get to class, and keeping track of that piece of the puzzle as we're transitioning in between our class times. So we'll go back out this way. And we will head up through the stairs in the admin office to come out in the counseling office. Um, and then we'll take a quick look up, up there at some of our areas as well. So these handrails will be a little bit different. This is just temporary for safety concerns. Um, so, uh, but yeah, it's gonna be much improved, again, just here for a safety reason. So we come up to our, our counseling suite. Um, this is where students would enter our counseling suite. Um, we have our admin assistant that would be here to the right, another admin assistant. And then we've got two small conference rooms slash testing rooms slash academic support rooms that we can use if we need. If we go back out this way, we've got kind of an open area workspace here. We're gonna have another conference room here in the corner to use for any type of meetings, counselor meetings, IEP meetings, whatever, we need family meetings. Um, we'll be able to utilize that space, which is something um that is very limited in our building right now as well. These rooms that you're passing here are our counselor offices that they will have. Um, so they mirror very much the admin assistant principal's office below us. This is our file room. Nothing too exciting about that. It's just gotta protect all the important documents here at Christiansburg High School. So, and we have quite a bit of them, so it's nice to have the space to store, store those in here. So as we go out of the counseling office from this door, we will actually walk into our media center. So what an awesome view when you look around here, um, lots of daylight, lots of sunshine. You can see they've started to input some of the windows um in. So this is just gonna be a magnificent outstanding space um for our students um here at Christiansburg High School. Um, we will have um lower bookshelves, so none of this view will be blocked. Um, and they can come in here and work on collaborating on classwork, come in, get some reading in, um, come and get some other work done. We can hold meetings. All of our bookshelves will be on casters, so the space will be movable, and we can adjust it as needed throughout the year. So we are extremely excited to offer this to our students and staff and families um of Christiansburg High School. If you look here on the, the left, you see kind of a blank, a, a wall with no windows. That's where there's gonna be video board, some whiteboards. Um, we're gonna have some tables here, so it can actually be like a, a classroom space. So teachers can bring their classes in to this space, and whether they're working on projects or working on research, whatever, they, they will have that space to do that here in the library. So as we exit the library, you'll, you'll see our, our walkway that looks down to the left over our cafeteria. But to the right, we would go down um a similar classroom hallway that you saw on the lower level. Um, these doors will obviously not be here. This will be open. But um this pretty much mirrors exactly what is below it. Um, just another classroom hallway, um, eleven additional classrooms um for our school. Again, that we're just extremely excited to have with windows and space. So as we continue this way, um, across this pathway, we're gonna go into our area where our world language classrooms are. Um, and hopefully those are gonna be done here by the end of the summer, and we'll be able to transition those um teachers and classes into this area. Um, so we're starting to transition here from the new building um to where it meshes um in with the old building. So you can see some of the old brick here on the right. Um, the wall in front of you is our current counseling office, um, our temporary counseling office. Um, where they're housed at this point, so they hear a lot of this construction noise that's going on. Um, but as we come this way, you'll see this is one of our world language classrooms here on the left. Another great classroom space. Um, all of our classrooms will have built-ins. Um, kind of like a countertop going across with some cabinets underneath, cabinets on top. Um, also some filing cabinets there too, so plenty of storage space. So something, again, our, our teachers aren't used to having, and we're just extremely excited to have this. This thin little area will not be here. This will open up. Um, but this is just here for now until they dismantle this and start moving the renovations and building process into the new building. Um, this will just be a display case here in the hallway. Um, so that's what this little cutout area is. Um, as we start making our way around the turn, this will be our concession um area. For when we have sporting events here at the high school. Excuse me, guys. And as you continue to make your way around this corner, this will be our school store. And you may be wondering why those two are here, and if you pan around, you're gonna see the reason these are here is because we have our new auxiliary gym, which Christiansburg High School has never had access to two gym spaces on this campus. So we are really excited to open this opportunity for our PE, health and PE classes, along with just being able to host our sports teams and practices and, and other events that we see fit. So um, we've got some great windows here that will have some blinds, mechanical blinds that go up and down as well. Um, we also have openings on each side, which will connect to our main gym. So this brick wall that's gonna be right in front of you, that's gonna go away, and they'll have access to the main gym. So this is just gonna open up a lot of opportunities to us um moving forward in the future. We look for the auxiliary gym to be prepared by the start of the school year as they're finishing renovations on the main gym. If you look here to the right, um, between our old building, new building, this is gonna be kind of a courtyard area with maybe some grass, some seating um for individuals. Also, if you look up these steps, this is the way that you can access to the second floor from the main entrance cafeteria area to go up, get to classes, get to the media center. Um, we also do have an elevator, so don't worry. It is ADA accessible. Um, we do have that availability in case we have a student who needs access or a parent, family member, staff member. So now we'll kinda go into our, our kitchen area. How's it going? We have a great kitchen space for our cafeteria staff. Um, I think we've probably got the largest freezing refrigerator unit storage space. We could house anything we need here in Montgomery County in that space. So when you come in this way, um, this is gonna be where all the cooking, cleaning, prepping is gonna take place in this area. It's probably hard to visualize some of this. This is where the students will actually get their food um and come in for breakfast or lunch. And then if we make our way more towards the back, this will be our, our cooking, prep, sinks, cleaning, dish space will be in this area. And as we continue heading towards the back, we'll have a, um, an office for our cafeteria manager. And then this whole space right here is going to be for our refrigeration and freezer units for any of the foods that we have to store. So we've got plenty of space um for that, um, for our cafeteria staff or any other needs that we may have. This space here, um, we kinda went a back route through the cafeteria. This will be our new weight room space, which um is gonna be really great for our PE teachers and staff, because as we walk out and exit the weight room, it will be um immediately accessible from our health rooms, um, and then the gym is just above us. So currently, our weight room is housed out in our CTE wing, so our health and PE classes have to travel through the whole school to get there. So this is really gonna take down on some of their transition time and offer some more opportunities for them for PE and health. Um, so we're, we're really looking forward to having this space. Um, we can also access it through a door right here if we had to. Um, but our main entrance and um exit is gonna be right in front of you um at the door opening that you currently see. So as you're coming in from the cafeteria area, and again, th- these doors will not be here. This is gonna be our new um Christiansburg Institute display case area. Um, so you can see where they've started to frame that out for the display case. There'll also be some, some benches here as well, but this is where we'll move all our items currently in Christiansburg High School to this new area. So it will be visible once you come in the main entrance hallway and come past the cafeteria. This is the first thing that you'll get to see. Hey, we really appreciate you all joining us. I hope this was okay. I know it's a little breezy and cold, and it's hard to like put together where some of these places are, but if you ever wanna come by, get a tour, I'm happy to help you, and Randy, our project manager's happy to be here as well. So thank you all so much for joining us.
Do you have anything else you wanna add before we go on?
I know with the architect today about something else, but that is um actually ahead of schedule and under budget still. So we're looking to have some type of ceremony probably in July, if all goes well. Cause that's when they're gonna move into the new space and then start renovating some of the old space. So um, we're to come, yeah, excited.
Awesome.
Very cool.
Do you know how many of the new type restrooms have been?
I know that one, cause I've seen that one a few times too. I don't know how many there are. I'll find that out though. There is a concern about that, all the ceiling doors. You know, kids could get in there and close the door. I'll figure those logistics out. Somebody's behind locked doors, and maybe that's not always the best thing. But we'll see. I don't know that though, Penny. I'll find out how many.
Yeah, I don't remember mine. Any other questions or comments? First time that most of us have seen that as well, so that's very cool. Shane looks very happy.
It's amazing how well he knows the project. He's been really involved throughout the whole thing, orchestrating all that, and in an active construction site, it's a lot of work just managing it, you know, there's twelve hundred kids there every day too.
It's a pretty clean, tidy construction site there. I was pretty impressed with that.
Yes. Okay.
Alright, well, our next presentation is from County Administrator Angie Hill. We have a presentation on the twenty-five, twenty-six county budget. Take it away, Angie.
We're gonna um just go through an abbreviated version of the budget that I presented and Mark helped me present um a week ago. And then we can uh move forward with any questions that you might have, or if you wanna save those for the end of all the budget discussions, that's fine as well. This chart shows all of our revenue sources for the FY twenty-six proposed budget. Designated revenues, I think most of you know, are for earmarked for specific purposes. And this slide shows that approximately forty-three percent of our revenues come from designated uh sources. The remaining forty-three percent, the remaining fifty-seven percent represents the county's undesignated revenue. Real estate taxes are about thirty-five percent of the total budget for all funds. Almost immediately after sending the budget information to the printer, a, a little over a week ago on a Friday, I got a call from Dr. Brinkin who said, hey, there's a new CAF tool out. And it showed that uh the schools are expected to receive about a little less than a million dollars in addition, additional funding from the state than we had anticipated. So what we did on this slide was we showed what we originally proposed in the first few columns. And then also included the updated amount to show the split of all the revenue sources, not just the county undesi- undesignated funding, but all of the funding. So as you can see, in the far right-hand column, after the revised state projections, the split between the county and the schools is about fifty-fifty. This slide shows where all of our dollars go. So it chose the expenditures for every fund, um, the allocation between all the different areas. And if you combine all school funds with the debt service portion for schools, that equals about sixty-seven percent of the total budget. This slide shows the increase in funding from fiscal year twenty-five for the proposed budget and also with the updated amounts. Last year, you recall, was unique in that after the county's tax rate was set, the state allocated more funding to MCPS than we had expected. And so that increase shown reflects those additional dollars. So it's um about eleven point two million was what we were proposing, and then with the updated numbers, it's about twelve million. Our future schedule is shown here. A week from tonight, the Board of Supervisors has scheduled to establish the advertised tax rate and budget. And there is no proposed tax rate increase this year. That meeting will start at seven fifteen PM. It's important that we stay on this schedule because uh we do need to get the tax rate set by April twenty-fourth in order for the Commissioner and Treasurer's Office to do the work that they need to do and uh get the tax tickets sent out in time for the June fifth feeling. Another key date to bring to, to mind is April the tenth. That's when we will hold the public hearing on the budget and tax rate. We will uh include this presentation in board docs after the meeting, and there's a link that takes you to the uh budget if anyone wants to use that in the future. It shows the calendar, the proposed budget, and previous documents as well from prior years. That's all I have for uh the county portion. I don't know if you wanna have a discussion now or wait until the schools?
I think it would be best to do both presentations and then questions when you take.
Sure. Dosh, next slide available. This is broadcast. I gotta talk about there. That's fine. Hey, good evening, everyone. Um, this presentation for our school budget, we actually presented. I presented the budget to our school board. Obviously, the school board voted on it. Later date, I presented it to the supervisors. Then we had the discussion and the questions back and forth regarding that. So what I put up there today is just the one slide, which is where the increases would be for this new proposed budget. And one of the numbers that's important, as uh Ms. Hill alluded to, is the state revenue. So from the time we voted on the budget, that has increased. So if you look at that number of the state revenue now, it's eighty-two million four hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-one cents. That was, is about a million dollar increase of what we initially voted on. So we're gonna talk about that tomorrow at our meeting as well, but I figured we're gonna be here tonight, so let's talk about it with everyone. As you can see, the, the program, the things that we requested additional funding for is the additional personnel, the three percent raises that we wanna go across the board, you know, the SOQ funding positions. That's not all of our positions. We get the state aid for that, but then we have to make up what that difference is. And I, you know, I talked about that, I think, at both of our presentations, that the state determined you need this many first-grade teachers. And so some of those are considered SOQs and some of those are not. So it's not even like you can say, well, I give the SOQ positions the raise. They may actually be the exact same position, first-grade teacher in the same classroom, but one may be considered an SOQ or not. So this school board, since I've been here, has always taken those funds and made sure that we gave those raises to all of our people right across the board. We talked about the sixteen-dollar minimum. There's an increase there. That's a hundred fifty thousand dollars if we wanna raise every salary to at least sixteen dollars. We talked about a teacher's salary scale adjustment and reducing the number of steps from thirty-six to thirty-five. And the same thing when we presented that to the school board, the question was, well, why wouldn't you do that for all the classified staff as well? That's included in there as well. School board salary increase speaks for itself. We talked about that. There hasn't been a raise here for our school board members in a long time. We talked about the school security officers and how important that would be to fill the gap that we may have when we can't find SROs to fill those positions specifically at the elementary schools in, in Blacksburg, uh, strength. We're excited about a dual-language immersion program. First, when we wanted to start at President's Fork Elementary School, where we would offer instruction in Spanish and English, starting in kindergarten and hopefully growing that program every grade level as the kids mature through that program. We have some additional instructional needs, different software and different things, and as well as um additional funds for professional development. And that pretty much brings all those increases to about seven point seven million. And you can see those numbers there. Questions for me? Thank you.
Yeah, may as well touch on school nutrition too, just to kinda cover all, all the budget numbers, I guess.
I missed that one. Yeah, the school nutrition program, we talked about it as a school board, that we wanted to fund that. Uh, monies that we typically raise from charging a fee for the lunch and breakfast for those that are, that are not eligible for the free breakfast and lunch. And that comes about to about one point two million dollars, which would make lunch and breakfast free for all of our students in the county.
Supervisor King.
Got a question on that. On that, you know, I've been a big cheerleader, as I said, for free lunch and breakfast. Have you checked on that Senate bill, ten seventeen?
I didn't check on the Senate bill, but I checked with our school nutrition supervisor, Michelle Knotts. And we were worried about whether if we did this, would we lose any federal monies? And you assured me your understanding was that that was not the case. Is that accurate? Ms. Knotts?
At this point, yes. Yes.
Okay.
There's still a lot of unknown going on here as it, as it deals, you know, every day I, I've got some kind of new email um stating that this could happen. There's, there's nothing that I've read that is any kind of definite where we would have a negative um aspect to, you know, our, our funding that I'm aware of at this point.
I think Senate bill ten thirteen, ten seventeen.
Ten seventeen is what's going through Richmond now, saying if, if it passes, it's saying if any student don't pay their lunch bill or breakfast bill by the end of the year, the school board has to pay that tag. They cannot carry it over.
Oh, wow. I didn't know about that.
It's past the General Assembly waiting for the Governor's signature, I think.
Are we not, are we collecting the delinquent account money now?
We're trying to, we're not always successful.
That's what I was gonna say.
And I know there have been some people that have donated some church activity, a significant amount of money last year, forty-four thousand dollars.
Yes, it's amazing, they don't want to cover breakfast or lunch for students, but yet they want to make sure they're paying, even though they might not be able to afford it, not backwards.
I believe that bill, that bill, if it's approved, they will, will not let the school try to collect delinquencies after the year closes.
Right, but it still puts it back on the school system to do instead of them paying for it.
Right.
To start off with.
Yeah, so this, this additional would make that a moot point. There would be no students that owe money on their, their food services bill.
Right. Well, because the school board have to pay for it though.
Right.
No, we're, we're. Next year, if we approve this nutrition budget, no student would be charged for their breakfast or lunch. Therefore, at the end of the year, there would be no debt.
If it passes and the school board has to cover it, then the county's gonna have to absorb it anyway.
Won't we cover it now?
Cover the delinquency, don't we?
No, we don't.
We try to make them pay, but we can't make people pay.
But we can force them to pay, so if they don't pay, we pay.
And if people don't pay, we wind up eating the loss, yeah.
Right. But we try to deal step up.
Do we have any exposure to the, was it a USDA grant that, like, for, you know, lo- local sourcing of fresh produce, things like that?
Potentially, I think as Ms. Knotts said, we're not really sure where that's gonna land.
Oh, that's, that's the one that we talked about, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that may impact the CEP programs from what I think, but we don't know enough to speak intelligently about that, what that's gonna land. But it might, it might impact some of the, the, the CEP programs, the one I would worry about, where we have the six schools where we get, we pay for the breakfast and lunch because of the eligibility numbers.
What does CEP stand for?
Community Eligible Program, is that right?
Community Eligibility Provision.
Provision.
What other questions or items of discussion do people have about the proposed budgets?
I'm sure we'll discuss in more detail tomorrow night. I was trying to take notes as we were going into, to compare the numbers. Since it was two different presentations, it wasn't entirely clear to me. Is what we are asking for covered in their budget or not? That wasn't clear to me.
Can I speak on that?
Sure.
We asked for a county increase of five point six million dollars approximately, I believe, in the budget that was presented. And again, it's all preliminary, I don't think anything was voted on, correct?
Correct.
Was two point seven five million dollars in additional revenues from the county, is that accurate?
Yes.
So the answer to that question is no, no, right. Oh, okay, no, I didn't see that jumping out of me on the screen there, I saw pictures of them.
One of the things, if you look at the additional state aid that we received, some minimal additional federal revenues and what the county in the preliminary budget has proposed offering us, it comes out to about a six million dollar increase. And with the school nutrition program, we're asking for almost a nine million dollars. So we have to make up two point nine million dollars. And that would be what I would share with the school board tomorrow night, not to have that discussion tomorrow night, but that's what we have to take a look at, which of these programs do we want to look at maybe not including as part of that increase?
What is the total county revenue increase for twenty twenty-six?
What is the total county revenue increase for designated and undesignated vote?
So designated is all things coming from federal at state level, so just undesignedated?
Do you know that?
Seven point seven.
Seven point seven.
Understanding that within that seven point seven, we're funding into the fire station, eight deputies and twelve firefighters along with administrative staff and building.
I totally understand that, but I mean, as, as the county is innovative with their spending and increasing services to the county, the school board is also innovative with their increases in funding to the county. Now, only one of us has the ability to raise revenue, so.
I'd just preface this to me and him are actually friends.
So two point.
So before we get going on this one, we're actually friends, so.
So I mean, i- if I understand that correctly.
Yeah, I don't know that way.
Two, two point seven increase for the school system means that there's a four million, sorry, five million dollar increase in expenditures for the county, is that correct, approximately?
The math, the math averages the school rate of increase approximately three and a half percent a year over the last dec- last decade. The increase this year is above four, so.
The average county increase being roughly two point six percent revenue.
For the schools.
But the revenue increase is approximately eight, correct?
Right.
So the school system accounts for sixty percent of the county budget, and we're receiving.
With debt services, it comes out to sixty-seven percent. Sixty-seven point two, something like that, off the top of my head.
And of the revenue increase, we're receiving two point seven million of seven point seven million, which means we're receiving about thirty percent.
The first column is the seven point seven million dollars in total that shows the breakdown between the county and the schools.
And do you know off the top of your head how much of that is specific to fire and rescue?
One point. It's at least one point one, it could be more than that.
It's more than that, you actually sent out an email, it's like one point two five for the firefighters themselves, four, five hundred thousand for the first set of, sets of equipment, and it goes on from there, there's a full explanation of it, plus the administrative costs and everything else in between there, to include.
It's about, I think, one point one for the firefighters. And then there's an administrative person that's related to, to that function. Mark will tell us.
And then one-time expenses like turn out here and.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is perfect, so the subtotal, schools fifty percent on the right-hand column, subtotal, county fifty percent on the right-hand column. But for this year, the total increase for schools is two point seven, total increase for county is four point eight. That should be more along the lines of three point five and three point five, if we're continuing funding, both of us at the same percentage rates.
But that's not happening.
Correct.
Well, that's not happening, but it is the body, governing body.
There's a period in it, it's not a problem.
There is a governing body that is able to collect revenue that is dictating that the other body will be cut significantly in their increase in comparison to what you are increasing yourself.
If you look at yourself individually, not comparing yourself to us, you're getting above-average increase from the county.
I think it's unrealistic with the amount of safety precautions we're having to put in place right now for Eastern Montgomery, for the amount that we're doing for the deputies. I, I think it's, it's unrealistic to be able to look at that as a fifty-fifty split when there are one-time costs and first-time costs, because there's been a big swing towards public safety for us. It's gone from seventy-one percent in the last five years to schools, to a total of sixty-seven percent, to include debt service. That the increase has been all in public safety, not in standard stuff. It's about a one percent change in general operations, but the biggest change has been in public safety. And that's not a negotiable part. That's not even, and I'm not trying to speak for the entire board, this is just me as a, as a whole looking at the numbers because you, you and I both know, you've talked about this, how much I crunch all this stuff and how I go through everything. So me and you, we've had part of this discussion. But that's, that's, could it swing the other way next time? Yes. But the reality of the situation is this time, we've got a lot of one-time costs, single costs, and a lot of things upfront for public safety for the eastern part of the county that has to be put in place. It's, it's not an optional thing.
And we are also looking to provide our students with better services, provide them with the free meals that are with the meals at no cost that Mr. King has asked for in the past, and what it would take. And also with counseling services to better, have better outcomes for our students. So it was asked at a previous board meeting, oh, why are we, why are we providing school meals at no cost to students? If it's just for, to make us feel good? That's, that's kind of a, a little bit of a flippant question there, but, um, no, that, that's not why. The, the reason is, is so that we have better educational outcomes for our students. Providing at no cost to student school, to student school lunches and breakfasts will improve student health, academic performances, and overall well-being, while also addressing food insecurity and reducing stigma associated with receiving assistance.
I'm so glad we had this talk so you could write this out ahead of time.
I didn't have this talk, you, it wasn't a talk that we could write this out ahead of time. There was a comment paid as to why we were doing it. And the school system did not provide adequate reasoning for why we were doing it. So I am providing reasoning for why we're doing it now. So school meals are a critical source of nutrition, especially for children from low-income households who may not have access to regular nutritious meals. School meals at no cost to students reduce food insecurities, obesity rates, and improve student health outcomes. Nutritious school meals help students develop lifelong healthy eating habits. Students who eat school breakfast have been shown to achieve higher scores on standardized math tests and attend more days of school per year. Improved nutrition leads to increased focus, attention, and better classroom behavior. Studies show that universal school meals produce positive overall effects on school attendance and academic performance across all grades. When school meals are provided at no cost to students, it removes a longstanding source of stigma since access to meals is no longer linked to income. School meals at no cost to students reduce financial and social barriers to participation, including the stigma associated with receiving those free meals. Providing meals at no cost to all students eliminates the act, inaccuracies in applicable, in cer- in application and certification that have resulted in some eligible children not receiving those meals. When schools provide lunch and breakfast to all stu- students at no cost, area households spend less money on groceries and lower in, low-income families buy more nutritious foods. School meals at no cost to students will alleviate meal debt for families. School meals at no cost to students will help school nutrition budgets by increasing participation in breakfast and lunch programs. In previous years, Mr. King, thank you, has asked what it would take to extend the free breakfast and lunch program in our Title I schools to all students in our county. To my surprise, I became aware that many, several counties are already doing this across our state. So what would it cost to accomplish this in Montgomery County schools? The answer, budget to the school system that includes a program with a one cent tax increase per hundred thousand, per hundred dollars in real estate properties. That's ten dollars per hundred thousand dollars of assessed real estate. Or two hu- two dollars and fifty cents per month on a three hundred thousand dollar house. Two dollars and fifty cents per month, to me, is worth it to make sure that all of our students have a nutritious breakfast and lunch every day in our school systems while they're under our care.
Can I talk?
You may.
I think that's awesome.
So one cent.
I think, I, you said I could talk.
We equalize it, okay, go ahead, go ahead, I talk long enough, go ahead.
I think that's awesome. I think that's a great program, and I think within the money that's being provided, you're gonna have to find that to be able to, to adjust what you want to be able to do without raising the taxes of everybody else. You know how much of a proponent I am for school, with the amount of money that's being given is an increase from where it was. So that is where I feel that adjustments may have to be made on your part in order to be able to meet that goal, because I think it's a great goal. But we're not adding to the taxes, and we're not gonna take away from public safety, and I will stop there.
So how much is the county increasing their salaries in order to?
Three percent.
In this year?
Three percent.
Okay, so what you're requesting from us is to reduce our costs, and the only real area to reduce our costs and keep those kinds of services is our three percent increase. So if you want to.
Seven hundred eighty-five thousand comes from compressing escape.
Can I?
Yes.
Reducing our salaries.
Can I?
Director Brinkin, can we bring up the slide that has our budget? Is it, or?
It's not even.
So I, I want to push back gently without debating the issue of food. Is that, that the suggestion here that our increases are by, purely by choice versus the county of it being incumbent upon the county to make these expenditures. So Superintendent Brinkin, can you speak to the increase in spec ed and five oh four coordinators? Because those, the increase funding for those positions are to address lapses or inadequacies in our program that we're compelled to by law to be providing services. So I, I, I understand that there is choice in this budget, but some of that increase goes to staffing that we are required to provide services for. So it's not like the six point, whatever, plus million are purely for increases that we just want to spend more money. I mean, there, there's money in there that we need to be spending to meet our, our legal obligations. How many, how many staff members are we including? So the five oh four coordinator, coordinators, but also.
Two five oh four coordinators. So make sure we can adequately provide that service to our students that are eligible. And then there's ten special education teachers included, that's in that top line for, under the additional personnel.
And, and how much does that come to?
The ten special ed teachers comes out to eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
And the five oh four coordinators comes out to about two hundred thousand dollars, under ninety-three thousand. That's including benefits and everything.
Right, and then with the, the SSOs, so I just want to gently push back there with this type, this suggestion that we're just like.
It wasn't a suggestion, I, I, I know these are things y'all need to do, but you're only gonna get a fixed amount of money to do it. It's not gonna, it, one's not gonna take away from one to get to the other. And before I keep talking and not anybody else, if anyone wants my time in, please feel free.
How about if you just take care of the kids that need the meals? Instead of everybody?
Every child needs the meals.
Okay, let me rephrase that. You have, you have kids now that are paying for lunches. Right?
We have, and.
There's kids that aren't paying for lunches that eat the lunch.
Just bringing up the ones that are paying for lunches and then we have to pick it up at the end.
Those are the ones that I'm talking about, the ones that can't pay. How much would it be to, to feed them?
Forty-four thousand dollars or whatever of the shortfall that they had. Isn't that what you said the church supplied or something like that?
No, it's just the late fees, the late.
That was, how many, yeah, how many meals, uh, that people didn't pay for that were outstanding?
Delinquency.
Delinquency, thank you.
But include the kids that, that may not be eating because they don't have either money for.
How do we identify them?
Well, I, I think your teachers can identify them.
How do you make sure that that identification is completely equitable?
I don't think a lot of the delinquency has to do with, um, cans. It just isn't, and, and I, along with a lot of things that happen in America's, it is, priorities and things like that. But I think if that were to, you know, be discussed eventually, you would have more and more and more people becoming delinquent because they would think, well, the school's gonna pick this up anyway. So I don't know that that's a good avenue to go down, but.
You, you came to that one point two million dollar number, that's basically what the revenues are now for the children that pay for breakfast and lunch. So, and I think our participation rate, Ms. Knotts, fifty-five percent across the division, is that about right?
Correct. Yes.
And even in the schools where the lunches are free and reduced, it's around that number too, not much more, correct?
Correct.
Now, we, we did also include a ten percent increase in those that pay for their lunch to cover those that we're gonna be picking up potentially that are not participating in the school lunch and breakfast program, unless I'm mistaken, correct, Ms. Knotts, or, uh, Angie?
That is correct, yes.
But that is one thing. On your budget last year, how much new money did y'all receive last year? Twelve million dollars?
Uh. I think we asked for twelve, I think we received a little.
How much was cut the previous year too? How much was cut from the proposed budget the previous year? How much was cut from the proposed budget the previous year?
Don't know if I have that one here. I know last year we asked for a twelve million dollar increase, I think we got around eleven million dollar increase. And big portion of that was six million dollars of that went to the five percent raises that were mandated by the state if we wanted to get those state monies. And then we also had, I know off the top of my head, a million five went to, um, health reserve account cuz we were underfunded in our medical coverage. So that's seven and a half million dollars right there before you get into talking about anything else that was not mandatory. Right, those are things we had to do.
If I recall correctly, the previous year we asked, yup, I was not on the board at that time. It was requested for about six million dollars increase and we were nearly held flat. So that twelve million the following year was to cover the deficit from the previous year. And put back in some services that had been cut significantly.
The numbers that were in our budget book show an increase every year has been going to the schools.
It was an increase, but it was very small.
From twenty-three to twenty-four, the county provided two point four million dollars as an increase.
I was gonna say two point four five.
Two point four million dollars.
Yes. Yeah, but you have to, you know.
It, it, what is that, one and a half percent on one hundred and fifty million dollar budget?
Is that the year before the reassessment, so we don't have a lot of money happening at that time, you know?
That was the year of the, of the reassessment when you lowered the tax rate from eighty-nine cents to seventy-one cents.
It was, it was neutral, yeah.
Well, you lowered the tax rate to a, from a rate to a neutral rate that you claim, that was claimed to be neutral, that's correct.
Right. Right.
The reassessment went to effect.
I sure.
Yeah, January first of twenty-three.
Well, number one thing is, I watch the school board meetings, right?
Okay.
And a couple of the school board members said, we need to start picking our priorities.
Okay.
So if free lunch and breakfast is a high priority of yours, we can make it happen.
Is it a high priority of yours? You asked about it.
It has been.
Okay.
But the taxes aren't being raised.
But, but you.
Next year, it may be possible, maybe this year it can't be.
I, I'm not even. I'm not even asking for the taxes to be raised, just provide, the, the budgets are fifty-fifty, provide the increase. Fifty percent to the county, fifty percent to the school system.
So why, what, what are if?
Or raise the taxes one cent.
What if you look at the budget, you're past. You got more increase than a county did. So you're saying, if it comes up, we need to go feed.
How often, how often has the county received?
Is that what you're saying?
How often has the school system? If we wanna go, if we wanna do that, fifty-fifty, sure.
So then you'll come.
That's what our current budgets are.
You'll come back to us first because you need more money.
You can't predict the future, nor can I.
No, but you can pick your priorities, just like the county does.
Correct, but the county is the one that is picking the priority of how much to fund the school system as well. You pick the priority of how much money goes to everything. The school system does not have that choice, we do not raise revenue.
No, but you, how much, how much tax do you get from the county? How much revenue do you get from the county?
Fifty percent.
No, no, you better rephrase that one cuz it's fifty-nine and then you add debt services and it goes to sixty-seven point two. It was seventy-one percent. Seventy-one percent of the county's overall entire budget went to schools.
So you're saying that you've been continuously decreasing us?
No, money's been going up, public safety's been increasing. You get a certain amount of money and it's an increase. It's not like we're holding you flat, you're getting more money. Then you need to prioritize and decide, this is what we wanna do with it. There is, there is a.
So increasing money at a lower per, at a lower rate is decreasing money.
There is a set number. But you're not, you're still getting more, you don't have to compress the payment, that's seven hundred eighty-five thousand.
You're decelerating, you're not going backwards.
That's seven hundred eighty-five thousand, this budget depresses them.
We have trouble getting school teachers, getting custodians, getting all kinds of personnel resources. We have to be able to compete, this is one way that we're going to try to do.
Can we look at it a little bit differently? We have a lot of one-time expenses this year because of the public safety choices that we're making. That we shouldn't have one-time expenses next year. If we can't do it this year, maybe we can do it next year.
It's a big maybe, I mean, big.
Well, I mean, it's just, just like when you had trouble getting school bus drivers.
I'm sure, and, and we're, but, and just like we say. We are always on the side of begging for money because we can't raise any money.
Welcome to a Dylan state.
I know.
Well, just like you said, not you, but the school board member said, we just having trouble getting school bus drivers. And you picked it up and you got good school bus driver, you.
You raised the rates.
It, it was said, maybe we need prioritize our custodians.
Right?
See, you get a budget every year. So it's, it's up to y'all to figure out how you go spend it, we can't tell you that.
Oh, I know that.
Compared to other school board members, are there any others who might have any comments to add?
And even though, I mean, watching our meetings are, you know, I'm not completely bought into the, the funding of breakfast and lunch. Um, I think there's other things in the mix that I would like to see happen. I could go along with it if we get, as a county could afford it, of course, it sounds great. But I think we have a lot of waste in our, our lunch and, that I've seen, so I would like to find a way that we can control that. And that was what I said publicly at our meetings as well. Or maybe if we couldn't fund both, if we could have, if we could fund lunch instead of breakfast and lunch. Um, but as far as, and, and one of my priorities and, and Ms. Franklin's as well was talking about custodians because they were below waged. And as our last joint meeting, I shared, we should be on the same level because we've got people going from the county to the town, back to the school, to the county, whoever pays most at the time. So I had expressed, we need to be on the same level. And they have to make a, a living wage, some of our people weren't even making living wages. And so granted, yes, we get a budget. But ours increases every year with everything else to pay people. So even though we prioritize, there's some things you just have to do. Even though you guys are saying, well, I wanna prioritize safety, understandable, I think that's great. But sometimes just the wage has to be done. It's not a, not wanting to, not prioritize it or to prioritize it, it has to be done. So I, 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 I see it from both sides. You know, I understand the county has a, a heavy plate full. But the school also has a heavy plate full because we're, we're educating the future.
So what is the, what is the minimum wage now for schools?
Well, that's what we're trying to do, the lowest person I think makes what, fifteen dollars an hour we're at now, which just happened.
We have people that make twelve and thirteen dollars an hour.
And in, and the county right now is sixteen twenty-nine. With your three percent increase, you will be sixteen seventy-eight. Our increase is sixteen dollars, so you will be, we will be competing against the county for custodia, new entry custodians and all entry workers at sixteen dollars when the county's paying sixteen seventy-eight.
And it's not just competing against the county, it's competing against any kind of employer. I mean, even fast food, folks are giving fifteen dollars, sixteen dollars an hour just to bring people in. So when we talk about prioritizing, when you all talk about safety, especially in Eastern Montgomery. I absolutely get it. I have been watching this and I have been holding up our EMTs and our fire departments and stuff because people just think, oh, we just call them, they come. Well, no, that doesn't happen unless you all put things in place. So I'm very glad to hear that, that's a priority. For us, it's educating these students, making sure they are ready to learn when they get to school. And if not, us providing meals so that they can. Us providing teachers who are gonna be ready to be there and wanting to help support and educate our students. Because right now, you all watch the news, teachers are not, people are not signing up to be teachers. And the ones who are, they're saying, I'm out of here. So there has to be some kind of incentive and things put in place for us to help support the students. So the teachers have a, also have a better experience when they're trying to do their job. So when it comes to priorities, we're all doing the same thing. You know, I've been here a long time and I understand how this works. So for you all to say, this is what you get and then we figure it out, that's absolutely the way it works. And I'm the one who's saying, no, we don't give them a needs-based budget, budget. We give them a budget that reflects what we need, not just, we're gonna settle for this because we think this is what they'll fund. No, you need to see what it takes to fund the school system. And just like everything else that goes up every year. So what we get, we're gonna prioritize and do what we need to do with. But as Derek is saying, that goes up every year because there's always a moving target. And right now is finding teachers and people to help support the school building. You can't, we're having to hire outside folks to come in and help clean the buildings. That costs money too. So why not put that money into the pockets of the people who are used to doing that? Aids for our students, when we have special needs students who may go to, go through three, four, five aids every year. That's no consistency for those students who need the most support. And we have to pay people to do those jobs. And you all don't understand what that entails, especially as special ed, paralegal, or para-professional.
Professional.
As, as they're called now, right? So, um, I will never forget the presentation we got from a special, um, ed, para-professional. Talking about what they had to do every day, because you would be shocked. Having to clean students who have had accidents, everything you can think of. They deal with this every day. And that turnover is like this, that does not help those students, which means it does not help the classroom teachers because nobody's giving those child, those children the support that they need. So priorities are across the whole gamut. But don't think we're not gonna prioritize whatever you give us. But what we gave you was what we need to make sure we're supporting our students and our staff. And making sure that the students in Montgomery County are gonna be educated and well enough to be able to be the next leaders in this county, to be the best citizens, to be able to bring in jobs that they're gonna be able to perform. You know, it, it's, it's all wrapped in together and it takes money, plain and simple. And if our citizens aren't willing to give up a penny to help support that, you know. We need to do a better job of helping to educate folks, that's true. What happens when you don't? Because when it comes to, I was talking about, how come this isn't happening in the schools? Why is this happening in the schools? It all comes back to money, plain and simple, it comes to money. Everybody wants an SRO in the school, but when the resources aren't there and the police departments, because they can't bring people in. You gotta come up with some other way to fill that need. And that's what is happening with that also. I don't particularly like it. I'm sure if you watch the meetings, you've heard that, right? But if that's what's gonna give students and parents and rest of the folks in the community a feeling of security and that the children are gonna be protected in some kind of way in case something horrible happens? Because everybody says, I never thought it would happen here. We've already had it happen. We don't want it to happen in K through twelve. So, I'll shut up, but I'm just thinking. We, we all need it and it costs money to run this county. I understand folks have limited resources to be able to pay taxes. But if we don't pay a little bit upfront, we're gonna end up paying it on one end and on the other. And that's where our law enforcement usually comes in, the court system. And we don't need more of that.
So I have a couple of questions about approved, funded, but vacant, like vacancy rates. Or, and this is across, like, not just at the schools, but in the county too. Like, for example, SROs, do we have, like, positions allocated that are unfilled? Which is why we're proposing the SSO and so can those, you know, those dollars be, if, if we're gonna hire with an MCPS and we've already approved it in the county budget at the sheriff's office, is there dollars to shift there?
The SSO positions, I believe, are for Blacksburg Elementary Schools.
Correct.
We do not, there's one SRO that's a talent police officer that covers those elementary schools, I believe.
Four. But what I'm saying is, we have an approved other SRO positions in the sheriff's office that are just, we can't find a person for.
Right, there's been some turnover, but I think that they're all either currently filled or in the process of being filled.
Okay, alright, so that's one question. And then, so then on the, on the school, on the MCPS side, right? Like, I think there's six hundred and seventy or so regular and special education, uh, positions approved in the budget. How many, like, what's the vacancy rate currently, uh, cuz that doesn't even include this year's proposed. And I understand, like, some of our difficulty in recruiting is salaries and things like that. But just approving positions to have positions when we can't fill what we have. Like, that does create some, a little bit of fat in the budget, if you will.
Salary, salary savings, that's what they, that's what social, Department of Social Services is calling it, salary savings.
But, like, I, I understand the need to have the positions, but if we're not filling the ones that are already there just to add more to it, so that, hey, just in case. But, so do we have any sense for what our current vacancy rate is for some of these key positions?
The county?
Yeah.
Uh, no, it, it, in the school?
So, I, I asked that question and, look, I wanted to know some comparison to surrounding counties for special ed or vacancy rate.
Or even in the county.
I think it was around eleven percent, um, which is comparable or a little better than in some of the surrounding counties. So this is a statewide problem. But there's a trickle-down effect of our staffing issues. So for instance, we had a review done of special education. And one of the things that came out of that review was that we were over-relying on paraprofessionals to do the work. And so that puts a strain on the special ed teachers and we had a lot of turnover of special ed teachers. So there, I, it, you can't isolate the two, so we're, it's cheaper to have a paraprofessional than a special ed. But if you have turnover with the special ed, so it's a little, if that's complicated, but we're in line with surrounding counties.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on special ed, correct?
Yeah, because.
I have it up actually, it's. But if we have a ten, ten-ish, twelve percent, twelve percent vacancy rate?
No, 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 no. Administrators, we're at a, we have two point three percent vacancy. Certified instructional positions, one point one percent, special education, seven point six, classified, five point six.
But, yeah.
And eleven point eight was psychologist for state vacancies.
Yeah, there's some, okay.
Were being voted, but this is.
Yeah, but there is.
What's that? The va- the vacant positions, this was as of our last meeting update. Administrators were two, certified instructional positions were nine, special education positions were eleven, classified were forty.
Yeah, so it was, it was, it was less, I don't know where the eleven came from, but the second on the SSO is, um, when, when Hank was speaking, he said that there, they had, uh, we were trying to hire and they didn't get any applications for one of the positions. Do you remember him talking about that?
He was talking about the SROs.
For the SROs. So part of the present, the, this discussion with the SSOs and, and why there was support from, from the sheriff's office is that there are incentives in the SSO program that make it more likely to be able to hire versus SRO.
Right, right, right.
Because they can still get their, their, um.
As well as training.
County virus.
It's a, it's a totally different type of position. So, an SRO and an SSO are totally, they, they kind of perform the same function, so to speak. But they're, they're totally different, they're totally different.
Right.
The SSO is support, right?
Because the SRO has to have specified training, there's so much more to an SRO. But that's better, an SSO is better than nothing. Um, to have someone in there and who knows what they're doing and can help.
Right, but there was, there was more confidence on the SSO because of.
There is, because it would give retired, like, uh, military or law enforcement. I think it was one of the only positions in the state, help me April and Steve, that they are able to, to, to gain some of their benefits by coming back to work and, and that, and, uh, I think it was a forty to fifty thousand, maybe a year salary. So it's a, it's a, it's a pretty good salary for a retired, uh, person to be able to, wanna come back to. So there would be more interest, I think, and you wouldn't have to have the training or wait on the training to get somebody in there, so to speak.
They get to keep all of their bene, VRS benefits.
And they get to keep their benefits, right, right.
And one of the things, you know, just, just on Supervisor Graski's question first is that we do have some vacancies that are hard to fill, especially at T- And one of the things, you know, just just on Supervisor Graski's question first is that we do have some vacancies that are hard to fill, especially a teacher is one. Psychologist is one, um speech language, language therapist is one where we have eight positions, we only have four people filling in now. So we have to contract out, that costs much more money than having our own people there. Um so some of those special education positions that are funded in the budget, right now, as you said, we're we're down eleven positions now. And it's not that we've been down those exact eleven all year, we've hired some, we've lost some and it kind of goes like that, it's really hard to find. One of the ideas that we had proposed with the initial initial budget was to change the salary guide to make it a fifteen step guide. As opposed to thirty-six, to try to woo people that maybe are working at Pulaski or working at Roanoke City to say, hey. I didn't get to top in fifteen years, maybe I wanna come to Montgomery, it's a better environment, better. That's kind of the overall picture to try to get people in it, but it costs money, I know that and we gotta choose what we wanna do. The SSO, so retired school security officers, that actually came from Chief Brewster, Chief Ramsey and and Sheriff Parton. They came to me with that idea because they had said they can't find SS uh SROs. Uh especially in Blacksburg, they can't find the people that would wanna do it, that it was an opportunity for us.
Right, yeah, no, and and I'm I'm all for that, like I was just looking for areas where maybe we've got positions that aren't gonna get filled somewhere. And we can transfer, you know, look to reallocate those dollars or something like that. But you know, it's just kind of like having these open teaching positions, understanding that there's kind of, there's always gonna be some turnover, retirements, you know, things happen. Um and you know, how how big of a a buffer do we need to have? And are those positions allocated to certain schools or grades or whatever, is it more of kind of a pool? And hey, this school needs one and so we hire out of here and move these things around. These are just kind of things I've seen happen in the private world uh and stuff like that. You know, you approve a certain number of positions and hey, you know, we gotta have a conversation. Eastmont or Harding or whatever school and you have an open position, I need a teacher, we've got a candidate, but we don't have a open position, those kinds of things.
We do do that though, I mean, we're forced to triage when we have shortages, not due to funding, where we can't get them. And or if their funding isn't there for what we think we really need, we have to go where the uh the greatest need is, right? But I think what Dr. Gettrick's saying, some of those requirements are federal and state mandates that we kind of can't look the other way. We have to find them and that that's why we have to fund it.
It's not a choice or a priority, that's just something you have, I mean, it's not a choice.
Sure.
Or it's not prioritizing money and you have to, the same with the SSO is a perfect line item. We don't get to choose that. We don't get to say this is where we wanna put our goals because it's a have to situation. So that's what I think sometimes we look at, that maybe we don't get the credit for having to, having to make those decisions. Yeah, we've got this pot of money and you can kind of pick where you wanna put that pot of money, but there's somebody telling us where to put our money all the time. Which doesn't make it easy, cause then we've got this much left to choose with what we wanna do, so.
What's, what's the county's vacancy rate on employment?
We just pulled that up, how many vacancies we have right now, we have uh eleven.
How many employees do you have?
Six.
Part-time and interns.
Oh, and that does include part-time people, so it's less than that. And there's a nine one one communication officer that that that's for the regional authorities. So um how many full-time positions do we have, do you know, Mark?
Well, we're looking that up, I do have one other, oh, sorry.
Four eighty-five, we have four hundred and eighty-five and we have currently.
About ten percent vacancies, or sorry, uh. About two percent vacancies.
I see.
Yeah.
We actually only have one county full-time position that's currently vacant and advertised. I'm not aware of any of, we have a couple that we're in the process of filling, but it's a low vacancy rate.
Yeah, I mean, ours have some under forty hour employees too, I mean, I'm sure Dr. Gray can could go and figure it out, how many are the under forties and whatnot. But let's just say, we're we're at about five percent, y'all are at about two percent, um.
But if you asked us a year ago, it'd be, it would have been a different story.
What would it have been then?
Higher, because we were going through lots of transitions and positions, so.
Alright.
I have a question about the compressing the salary scale to a fifteen step scale. Um and I understand the uh for recruitment purposes, that makes it attractive. What happens though when somebody gets to the top?
It's a really good question and that's what people were asking about, the one is when I get to the top. You know, there's two things with that. If I if I'm a teacher and I'm coming out of college and I got an opportunity to work in Roanoke City where it's thirty-six years or I got to the max, right? Where Montgomery County was fifteen, I would wanna think I'd pick Montgomery County. Even if I didn't get as many raises, I'm at the top thirty years earlier, fifteen years earlier than I would have been at the other school. Typically, what I've seen in places where I've worked prior to here is that when we get raises, everybody gets raises. So it might not be as big at the top, but you wouldn't just stay there, right? I mean, typically, I think that's how we got the thirty-six steps to begin with. Because when the raise came about, we would give people a raise and we didn't, we wanted to to be somewhat equitable for their years of experience, we just kept tacking on steps. I mean, I would advise that we keep the guide the way it is and it's the top people get minimal raises because you're gonna get more as you go up to the top. And the top's a pretty good salary for a teacher, so you you wouldn't have to give that as big a raise as step one or two. You know, we we looked at the numbers pretty hard and Supervisor Kits had mentioned earlier, if we did the teachers alone. That salary guide adjustment is four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for this year. If you did all the certified staff, that's five hundred and twenty, so that's almost a million dollars to do both of those certified staff and and professional staff to to make it down as fifteen steps. We looked at, well, what would that cost next year? Because you know, hopefully we're all here next year, right? Um and just on the guide alone would be about a million dollars. So even if the county said, listen, Bernie, nobody gets any raises next year, the state's not giving extra money. It would go up a million on just moving up the number of people we have moving up the guy. So that's less than what our typical raises are now, like you're looking at what we have in the in the uh budget for three percent raise costs is four million. That makes sense or did I muddy it even more?
It does make sense, um I just. The the question stays um at, you know, fifteen years. What's the incentive to stay?
It it's it's a good question, cause I've heard it at other places I work, but the answer I would have, let's say it didn't go up. You'd be at the top fifteen years later, earlier than you were, you'd be making that much more money for fifteen years more than you had been.
You're at the top level, long, but they're, they're, right, I see.
But everywhere I've worked, the top has always gone up too, right? It's usually not as much, but you'd get something, if everyone got three percent, maybe the top gets half a percent because it's at the top.
So to to bring both your certified and your, can you tell me the two blocks again?
Professional and certified.
Okay, professional and certified, the total for.
I'm sorry, we call it classified.
So the total for both of those is just under a million?
Yeah, I think it's.
Put them onto the the compressed.
Nine hundred seventy-five thousand.
And who, so with the compression, who, how does that get? What's the allocation like? Is it people at the top that end up doing better, people at the bottom that end up, is it all kind of equitably distributed in that? Cause I've seen when you compress salaries, people at the bottom tend to come up faster and you squeeze. Then you gotta squeeze and your people at the top are like, what the heck, I've been here for twenty years and you guys ride on my coattails.
You do this long enough, you know that you're not gonna please everyone, no matter what you do. We we worked with the MCA on this, which is the Association for Professional Staff. And tried to come up with something that was somewhat equitable. Um there are differences though, some get more raises than the other, you know, the overall. Uh to make that overall change, we looked at how many people were at each step and what do we mean to compress them? And what what I see is, it's not exactly the same in every step, cause it can't be, because of the numbers. But what what I do envision would happen, at least for one year, there'll be some people that would say just what you said, Supervisor Graski. Hey, took you thirty-six years to get there, I I got there in fifteen.
Yeah.
That's not fair.
Right, exactly.
There's no way around that, right? That would happen in hopefully only one year, because then that goes away and then everybody's on as you move forward. Um it's not exactly the same though, it can't be, or we wouldn't be able to do it. We didn't, we didn't even approve guides yet, we didn't, we shared some rough ideas with the school board, we didn't, we didn't bring any guides to fruition. But we did work with our our business office and we know the number of people we now have at each step and what that would call, what it would cost to progress, to uh compress them.
I have a follow-up question for Angie. Our our starting salary, our minimum starting salary right now is sixteen twenty-one, correct?
Sixty-nine, sixteen twenty-nine.
Sixteen twenty-nine, so is, does that change with the three percent raise? And then the starting salary goes up to above that or does it stay at sixteen twenty-nine for new hires?
Uh in the local government aspect, not the school systems. Typically, uh localities that don't have step systems, which we do not have a step system. If we adjust our pay scale exact, at the same amount as we're giving raises, then we have compression at the bottom, which we try to avoid. I know it's kind of, I I I hear you, but we try to avoid compression, we try to spread the people out along the scale. Or within their grade as their longevity stays with us. So typically, we do not adjust it as much as the COLA or CO, MER, whatever you wanna call it. It's not a merit, but the um salary adjustment, so last year when we had five percent, I think we adjusted the pay scale by three. To try, so it does not go up exactly the same.
But for me, but I don't know that that answered the question, are they making sixteen twenty-eight now? And then at three percent, will that go up, I think is what I heard you asking and I don't know that I heard that.
Yes, the people that are now making sixteen twenty-nine will be.
It will go up above that, that's what you were asking.
But the new people coming in will stay.
We'll still start at sixteen twenty-eight.
Maybe sixteen thirty-five.
Sixteen thirty-five, right, maybe a little bit more, not.
So it will even go up higher?
It'll go up higher, but it won't go up three percent for people that we hire next year, new hires, yes, right.
What is the uh, where do, where do y'all stand as far as uh other jurisdictions around? I think the last time we heard was several years ago, that you were like the second highest starting salary to teachers.
I have to look at that, I don't wanna say something out of ignorance, just making it up, I don't know, Steve.
Yeah, we were behind the only Salem at one point.
I know we were lower in our uh classified staff, that that's one of the reasons last year we wanted to raise that and made some adjustments. For custodial and maintenance, bringing the minimum up to fifteen, cause when we looked around at the surrounding areas, we were definitely lower. Um I'll find out, I don't know off the top of my head.
Are custodial and maintenance full-time employees eligible for benefits as well?
Yes, as are bus drivers, if they're over twenty-five hours, I think, twenty-nine, whatever the number is.
Any other questions before we move on to a conversation about the capital?
Uh some, some of those counties that, and there's districts that are ahead of us are Salem and that are competing with us are Salem, Roanoke County, Roanoke City. So that really affects that eastern portion of our county where we're not able to pull those teachers from those higher paying counties and districts. Into our school system to be, to participate in Chelsville and Eastmont High and Eastmont Meadow.
Those three.
Our jurisdictions are higher than. They're comparable and higher.
No, comparable, I would think they would rather come here, it's more pleasant.
I don't remember the exact numbers, there was at least one of them that was higher, I think it was actually two.
I've heard since I've come here, Roanoke City pays more, but you gotta work in Roanoke City.
Right, you're right, right.
I mean, that's what I tell people, you wanna work in Roanoke City, New Jersey, wanna work in Newark, you make more. Hon- honestly, that that I've heard that since I've come here from teachers saying, well, Roanoke City pays more, I'm like, well, work in Roanoke City. But I'll I'll get those numbers for you, Steve, I don't know that off the top of my head, so.
It'd be nice to have that every year, right? We liked it when we had it every year, that's.
I'll get, I'll get an offshore.
As well as like the steps, like for several years in a row, we would get all the school divisions compared to each other.
And all their steps.
And all their steps and you're proposed also, so that we would see, you know, that'd be helpful.
People typically do that to y'all when we wanna get raises, so now that you didn't have it, you're thinking, well, maybe they're too high, I understand, I'd need to get that information. No, I'm not saying you're saying that, but that would be my perception.
And we don't wanna race towards the median or the bottom either.
No.
We wanna be the excelling school system in the county, in the southwest Virginia.
Which we were and that's why we ended up at two. And then everybody else the next year went above, started to go try to get above us, so that they could attract people. We were getting a lot of people from Roanoke and Pulaski and that's not necessarily the case. Because one, there's not as many teachers anymore. So no matter what you do with trying to adjust the scales, you have to look at, there's not as many teachers. So you have to do more incentives to bring them there and I would say this again, part of that is the support staff. Because if they're not getting the support, if they're coming into buildings that that they don't feel are acceptable as far as the cleanliness. And that nutrition that the students are getting, they're falling asleep or they can't concentrate. That also goes into how we attract teachers, because they talk to each other. They know what's going on in everybody else's school district, even down to the schools, you know, I listen to. Um and and this time of year, when folks are starting to look to apply for other jobs. They start, I've get messages and phone calls, what about this school, what about this school? It goes down to the schools. So we've got to do what we have to do, just like you all have to do what you have to do. And if we're not all doing it together, then there's gonna be gaps. That's why we ask a conversation on it here.
On the budget stuff, um on the revenue side, Angie, I I passed you this in the hallway, right? So our lodging tax, I know it's not big, we don't have a lot of hotels in Montgomery County. But we are seeing more and more uh short-term rentals come through, requests for those, things like that. Our lodging tax is less than half of our two towns of the surrounding counties, cities.
What we collect?
What we collect, three percent.
The rate.
The rate.
Our rate is three percent, right? And I think it's between eight or seven and nine percent in the towns and city of Roanoke, things like that. I think it's only like a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in our budget or something like that. But um what, what is our process for looking at?
We can look at that, do you know if we can raise it higher than that?
I don't think we could.
There was a time that we were capped at three percent, I I'm not sure if that cap has been lifted, but we'll check and see.
And it is it like at at the county, i- is it because of we're a county?
Yes, because we're a county, we don't have a charter.
Yeah, and then there's, there's a statute that some counties have special permission.
Okay.
Uh where where they're able to do a higher rate.
Gotcha.
And I think at the time we tried to get in there and the legislature at the time wasn't too uh.
Didn't wanna give us special permission.
Too willing and so that but they ended up, I think we can do one percent above something, it's, we're we're very limited. Where cities can, and towns can do as much as they want.
Yeah, that's correct.
Have we um done any work for merchants capital, let's see if anybody's doing it more fairly somewhere else in the state?
No, we haven't looked at merchants capital at all.
So I've had a couple of people in the cake that we might want a quick break to use the restroom. Um more excitement is coming from my lap, so before we move on to the school capital, is everybody okay with maybe? Ten minutes or less, come back at eight forty?
Yeah, alright.
Hey, I gotta, did you see me, I was like.
Yeah, okay, do I get up now, do I, do I, do I get up now, or like?
Morning's like, got, got about, I gotta get, he's over there making a face.
I know. Oh my god.
I just almost wanted to break up.
It's hard or anything, I didn't know we were banged up. President Lincoln's birthday.
So I will be, yes.
I don't know if we're gonna make those calls at, I can't pause right now, no.
Can we mute everyone? No?
Let me, let me go downstairs and set up.
That's it, no, no, that's okay, nah.
Can we tell them now?
Just keep in mind that we're live streaming and you're not muted.
There we go.
We're live streaming and they, it's not muted, so keep that in mind.
I don't wanna talk.
That fixed it.
Like.
So we go, so we cover the report next year, you're gonna do high claims.
Yes.
There'll be an orthopedic one in there.
There is one.
Uh, I know that one.
Uh, so you guys know, the way it works is these two um speakers are also microphones.
Yeah, the camera's back. Oh.
So when it gets really quiet, if somebody is like, you know, whispering, you know, reach for that. Whereas if everybody's speaking, like have a little bit of trouble, you know, when it's a great person. Uh, yeah, and essentially um they will reach for the audio.
Right, right, right. One guy blew out a calf.
And you know, when there's a lot going on, it can get a little bit muffled where.
Fun's when I miss the workout.
Said uh, quick stop, baiting the silence here. Whisper. They say pickleball is like a killer.
Yeah. Alright.
It's a whole, wow. And they're all excited, it's like. It's that short, quick start, stop, oh yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I haven't gotten to pickleball yet, when I was a kid, we used to play tennis, cause we lived next to one of the county councils. They had a court, so we would just go up there and play just for fun, and we got fairly good. I would pickleball the same way, you can only play someone that's almost exactly the same as you. It's either really frustrating or really.
Every time something, like golf, it's pretty safe, swimming is pretty safe.
I love both of those.
Picking, you gotta be careful, mountain bike, you know.
I'm on a bike, it's tough. You gotta be real confident to.
And if 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 you if you get real bored quick, just go back.
So, you gotta go to.
No, I don't, I don't, we joke about that like that, no.
No, they don't.
But but maybe worse is we have these, yeah, they have old Alexa, you know, microphones on my desk. So I'll just say, hey Alexa, ah, announce, that's a very. Hey, uh, can I get some hype, can I get a drink?
Announce, I didn't know you could do that.
Yeah, yeah, you announce. So it goes on, they need to place on, save network. We talk to the kids, gosh, all the time.
Thought about that, I gotta call, gosh, good to know.
Cause it's like a whole house in there comes, it's like my colds. He, he started getting a little frustrated, he, Heather and Ella were direct for the whole day, it was just him, his job was to, you know, track me, make sure I'm okay. He bring me a checkbook, well, then he bring a checkbook.
Who's the pen?
I need a pen.
Stamps?
And I was like, oh, I need an envelope, and so he finally came up, he's like.
What do you mean?
You can ask for something every half hour on the hour and a half hour, otherwise you're not allowed to ask me. Okay, so so then I would say stuff like, what do you want? Just checking, it's on the hour, I don't need anything, just making sure you're there. But they've been good.
Careful of all that water, now we gotta push you to the bathroom.
He can do that on his own.
Yeah, I can do that. Yeah, my wife and I. Quickly progressing to what's an idea, so, yeah, some things I just couldn't, but like. Take a shower, you know, this week I can drive, I can get dressed.
I tell you, really is amazing, like like I've never really had a serious experience since I moved to life. This day. Like and it would, it's nothing in the big scheme of things, it's almost like depressing, you know, my senior year was the last preseason game. You know, I didn't wanna go to the games, just to watch.
I don't know, I was like, what the?
It's funny, I had one class, I studied to be a special ed teacher at the time, one class was called psychology, so I went to the professor and I knew it.
Oh, nice.
So I can't really get a real campus, you know, what can I do, I could say, nobody better than you, present some in the.
He's the best. Driving too, I would.
Yeah, I think this was like, this would be like.
That's good. I was fortunate in that time.
I think we're just, that's why he's not quite.
My right leg, I can drive with my left.
I didn't know, but.
Took a while to use the brake. It's a good thing you were where you were.
Level.
And stick.
Well, this was base here.
Rather than reals jumping as well, the first theory was up, after that you might be.
It's not very old.
I don't even think they make stickers anymore.
Uh, it's it's not the cars too typical.
Innovation.
Is there just, you just get a few tokens? Oh, yeah, cup box center.
Oh, thanks.
Me included, me included, I'm not gonna leave myself out of.
Typically, how do we die, typically, you know.
I can roll you anywhere, right?
Oh, no, nobody has on that.
Nobody has on that.
I got you, man, I'm that, I'm that kinda guy, I'm that kinda friend.
She was Olaf's seat. I have Olaf with the flutter, I work, it's the top of the seat up there.
Stitched on it, it's nice.
agenda.
So.
You're looking at it, it's right in front of you.
Right hand side, you're looking at it, right hand side of the chair.
Thank you, very much.
Oh, that's what that.
Cause I have been all over that area, I'm right over there.
From the right hand side, if you look.
From the right hand side, it's just.
Didn't it's a merit.
It is Mary.
Okay, Mary, is your seat at the dais, is it freezing? Oh, yeah, actually, it is warm, but we have. I mean, I'm talking freezing.
Yes. Taste like, yeah.
I'm like Olaf with the flutter, you know, what is that flutter, it's. I've got to our big guys.
That was, that was, that was. That was packed. That was, I wonder if you can get, this is all it is, I understand what you mean.
Oh, boy.
Well, I know.
We're trying to get on our spot. Anybody who knows, I know who I am, so. I'm just a little less calm, like we're into it.
You have that, you're long.
At least we can, we can leave.
Here, movement.
Just so you know. I had to reference, I had to reference, I knew how this was gonna go, photographs. A lot, I already knew how this was gonna go, I was gonna stop, stop your orders.
Okay, now, so if you need to roll out, you need to.
I'm doing a lot of. I'm doing a lot of.
Oh, god, oh, god, well.
This is, this is just, you're all trying to do the.
Have you switched for her? Yeah, I want, I want y'all to build a.
Capital's free thing for taking.
That's right.
I want y'all to get fired, I'm gonna.
I need a warrant, I need a warrant.
Yeah.
This is your warrant, cause I brought this in.
But but I have it, I don't think that's, I don't think that's gonna happen.
Uh, but it needs to make this warrant, it's.
No way.
I don't.
See, yep.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, but, you know.
So, um, as we regroup here. Definitely appreciated that break, I just figured I'd have to go.
Yes, listen up.
I have to start incorporating that, yeah, like the.
You should start considering that, yes.
Luxurious.
Yeah, it was.
We're happy, we all are.
We're not muted.
Hey, we are humans. There you go. I did have one other budget topic, it was a little more hypothetical, and it's not something we're gonna solve tonight, but I know it's an issue that's come up in the community, but. So we get about five point two million from federal sources, according to what was up there.
That count S N P.
Right, 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 right. Um, and we know the Department of Education is a little, a little dicey.
In influx.
Influx, thank you, so, yeah, certainly for us, for this year, that's not. You know, if something were to happen there, that would be hard for us to absorb in our budget, right, it's much just to cover that, so. I don't know if any thoughts have been given to some kind of a stopgap. Um, help there if something were to happen, um, and then in the future, depending what happens, we kinda plan around that, but. But who knows what the timing might be of that, what the attack might be, so, just kinda wanna put that on your radar, at least it wasn't already, I'm sure.
Yeah, I got email about it, and of course I have been worried about and freaking out about it, and most of that money, doesn't it go to your special ed and nutrition program? And those are critical.
Entitled programs.
Title.
It's five point two million dollars, it's critical.
It's about half special ed, half title, and then another million, half million two for S N P, I think.
Yeah.
But, you know, the guidance that we've gotten from the V D O E is that they're understanding, and nothing's official with anything, yeah. Is that those grants will stay in place, they just will be coming through a different funding mechanism, not the Department of Defense.
Right.
That's what we've been told, but no one said, nobody said absolutely, right, so I I don't know, yeah.
That's what they look for.
Right.
It'll be nice to just kind of start thinking as a group about, you know, a worst case scenario there, what that might look like.
Does the county also receive federal government funds, so how much, that are not school related?
We don't receive, we don't receive, um, a significant portion, most of the funds that we receive for. From federal programs or for social services, but the operations of the county are not funded with federal funds.
It's those entitlement programs.
And another thing, don't you receive Medicaid funding, and see, that's been talked about too, don't you get Medicaid funding for some of your students?
Right.
We do.
Okay, so we sent a letter to Morgan Griffith and our two senators, right, we sent that. Because it was brought to our attention by Bill Flattery, who is the CEO of New River, um, Valley Carillion, that they're very concerned about that at the hospital level. And so that might be something that maybe our illustrious leaders need to be contacted, those three. About your concern and about our concern about any cuts to federal funding to schools.
To be proactive.
Yeah, to be proactive, like this, this would be the impact it would have on Montgomery County schools if something happened. Might be something you could do.
Between the federal and U S D A for SNAP and things like that, the overall.
It's over six million dollars, if you're talking six million dollars, y'all know that, that's bodies, can't cut six million dollars.
Yeah, that's a significant.
Tighten the belt, yeah.
Okay.
Just a random question, can tax rates be raised mid-year?
Yeah, just have to have a public hearing, right, Marty, if you're gonna change something, don't you have to have a public hearing?
The real est-
We got to check.
Right, I think that, um, there's a deadline on the real estate, on the land book.
What's that?
Airplanes, we need to tax airplanes.
The land book is what, is for, oh, what is the deadline?
No, I mean, what is the, what would the, yeah.
Somebody said that to me.
We'll look and get that information.
But it's not necessarily just one time a year, even though that is all we've ever done.
We'll check.
It could be, we don't know, okay.
Okay, thank you for that.
Alright, are we ready to move to school capital project?
Yeah, you know, so, um, the, I think I just wanna give an update on where we are with our school capital project planning.
And I know that's something that the county and the school board was looking forward to getting done very quickly, you've not done it very quickly, but we're trying to do it correctly, right? So, where we left off with the school board at the last presentation when I was their architect, we presented possible renovations for three elementary schools in Blacksburg. Which was uh Marty Beeks, Gilbert Linkes and Harding Avenue Elementary Schools, as well as a renovation of Chelsville Middle School in Montgomery Center. And when we presented that, there was a high end, a low end, you know, what type of the changes would you wanna take place, so on and so forth, and give an overall idea what that would cost. And it was in excess of a hundred million dollars to do all those projects, so the school board has asked me to do, to go back with the architect and come. Come back with a plan, what are the priorities related to enrollment and spacing, and what do you, what what do you wanna do first? And what would be your priorities, and then to present that to the school board for a vote, or discuss further discussion on how you wanna do that, and then bring that to the board supervisors. For what would the funding term plans look like, you know, how far out would that be, and so on and so forth. Remember the architect today, we went over a lot of things with um Dr. Wickham as well, trying to triage on where the greatest need is and what we. What we think would be the most appropriate use of any funds for renovations of those five buildings, and what should be the order. We plan to have something to the school board, um, on April first, just to get it to you, that's a board meeting on the Tuesday of April first. And then have a discussion and a purpose, formal presentation on April fifteenth. After that, I'll see if the school board gives me direction and comes to some consensus, we could set something up with the supervisors. And get your thoughts on what that would look like as far as funding timeframes and things like that.
The county plans to present our C I P at the first meeting in June. So we're gonna move forward with that, and if your timing meshes into that, we'll move forward in that direction, otherwise we can add that when it comes to us.
Okay. That might work with us, depending on.
And we haven't adopted C I P, so the presentation would be an update to our C I P, I'm seeing yesterday.
Will be an update, and then we would ask you, maybe at that meeting, maybe at the next one, to adopt it, but we could change that anytime. And we're our, um, we're not projecting that we would need to issue debt for any of the projects that we're gonna bring to you.
And what is the debt uh issuance capacity?
Yeah.
At this point or in the next several years, some point in time in the near future, we we're gonna have a little bit of a pop of availability.
Right.
Um, you don't know that off the top of your head.
Not off the top of my head, and it might have changed since the last projection was done.
Mm-hmm.
As the school board moves for forward, I think it would be appropriate at that time to take that to our financial advisors and get them to run numbers again for us.
Is it Davenport?
Yes.
So at what point do both boards come together so that each can see what the priorities are and the reasons why? And then we come up with a plan as to what we did in two thousand and six, as to what the county's priorities are, the school district. And how and when monies would be available to do that, so it can be scheduled out. And hopefully we won't have a roof collapse or the economy fall, and we can keep a schedule so that everybody knows what's happening.
So you mean, Kenny, like after the staff get stuff together, then we all come back together, so we're understanding as both boards like we did in the past, right?
Needs to be a smart goal here, we need to have a timeline on this, it needs to be a hard timeline, it needs to be done, we can look at, you know, elementary school, not a specific one. But we know that way the county has the ability to budget out for an elementary, we know you're gonna refurbish an elementary school here, you know we're gonna refurbish an elementary school here. So we're able to block it out, so we're able to plan, because I think, and Mark, correct me right now, because based on the last income projections. We are borrowing ability based on where the high school was, it was only about eight million, somewhere around there. So, sorry, I put you on the spot on that one, um, I listen, I'm a well-trained husband, I take notes. So that's the way I understood it, cause we were already capped out, and Davenport did that brief, that we were capped about near where our max was, based on that income of the last year.
When Davenport analyzes that for us, we look at it several different things, we look at our financial policies, what the uh ratios are, those are all good. We meet all of those, the, um, so our capacity as far as our policies are are fine. We, it's not, it's an affordability piece, there's not funding available to pay debt service on the school side because of the twenty twenty-two issuance for the Christiansburg High School. So as some older debt drops off, which I think is in twenty-six or twen- I think it's twenty-eight. Then it starts freeing up some dollars, so we'll look at that and see what impact that'll be.
But you see what I'm saying, I apologize, cause I've been dominating the conversation, so I apologize, and this, I'm pretty damn. Um, so we have the ability to do, so you can throw out a school, a school, we're able to work in the mix of the county, we have a full integr-
Um, so we have the ability to do, so you can throw out a school, a school, we're able to work in the mix of the county, we have a full integrated plan, but not nailing you to specifics, but knowing in a general estimate, this is where we want to go, this is what we want to do. So in the event that something does happen, let's say, God forbid something happens at one of the elementary schools and it needs to be redone, you're not locked into a specific school at a specific time, but it gives the county the flexibility, so if something does come up, we have the ability to plan going forward. It's not locking you guys into like, this is, we're gonna work on Margaret, Margaret Beeks at this time, and it's gonna be this, you already know the elementary schools are thirty million roughly?
Twenty-five on average.
Okay, twenty-five, thirty million, but you know that's an elementary school, and you know you've got to do four?
Three.
Three.
Three elementary school, so why not lock this in and go elementary school every couple of years, because we know we're not doing it at the same time, because we don't have the debt capacity. So we know we're gonna have to stagger it as we go, and the county needs to be able to spend in between there to get what we need to be done for the overall, couple fire stations, EMS, things are gonna be, come up, things we don't plan. Is that?
Do you, is that what we do?
Would we? Is that what we've been doing?
No. This, this has been, okay, we need this, and we come and ask instead of there being a plan, it's like Derek's saying, like
Mm-hmm.
Mary has been saying, there was a plan where this is where the debt service is, this is where this is at.
Mm-hmm.
This is where we're gonna have money coming in that we can't put towards schools.
Mm-hmm.
At that time it was that courthouse, um, and have that laid out for the next several years so we know what's ahead of us, so you can plan for it. And the, and the public can see we're working together to try to make sure we're getting these taken care of, but it takes resources.
And you're right, many years ago, we did have a very robust plan for several years in a row, the middle schools, and I think Eastmont High School was in that plan.
Hmm.
Yeah.
So what I'm hearing is the school side will have more details in the spring and April.
Mm-hmm.
On our side, we'll have an update to our CIP for June, and then maybe post that, we can have a joint meeting and have Davenport come prepared with the debt cap capacity information to help us start to put together a plan. Does that kind of?
Yeah, and, and the really good thing about it is both boards really got an understanding of each other's needs, and it was very educational for the public, but then it just went away.
You just gotta put a hard line on it, I mean, because we're kicking it down the road, kicking it, kicking it, kicking it, because people get busy.
Well, some of this. Well, information from the board of supervisors would be good too, uh, or from the government side.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have five projects, they're twenty-five to thirty million dollars apiece? What's the pace that we can spend, that we can take out debt?
But we don't know, because we've never gotten anything.
Right.
Definitely.
We're telling, we're telling you right now, there's five projects, unless you're content in writing, unless you've got a plan, it's a wish.
Go ahead.
Send him an email. It's hope, it's hope, and I think hope is never a plan in consideration.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? Okay. Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
You're, you're, you said you're, you're asked up here.
I am.
Um, I don't, I don't see where there's a big gulf between what's a, what you're saying.
There isn't.
No, it's not, me and Penny have talked.
Right, but so, wait, so, so where's the disagreement?
I've talked. Nothing's ever put, no, there's no disagreement, it's just never been finalized, it's always been, this is what we'd like.
So.
But that's what we're trying to do.
I think what we've, what we've established is how to finalize it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So after the June presentation, then we'll have a joint meeting with both of our boards,
Mm-hmm.
with Davenport in attendance, so we can actually get some very real numbers, with the goal of where is the debt capacity going to be and what do both of us need?
There are five Mondays in June.
Okay, so June would be perfect.
I would.
So then let's, does, does that, at least for the time being, kind of help
I would.
establish the timeline of we are gonna have a follow-up meeting to include Dap- Davenport together in June, yes?
Not that maintenance was the issue of the Blacksburg High School roof. I don't know what the rule was, but we have to build in, or one, we have to understand, are we keeping up with all the maintenance that we need to do so we don't have catastrophes as a complement to the CIP? And if we're not, we gotta figure that out. So, as well as catastrophes happen, right? So we can't assume that we could spend to the last penny all the debt capacity.
That's a good point, isn't that weird though?
Two and a half cents.
Two and a half cents, it's, it's put aside.
Yeah.
It's very helpful.
Mm-hmm.
To help with us keep up the building, so we don't end up with that, but quite frankly, that happened, uh, like forty years before when they built that building, and they didn't build it correctly.
Yeah.
That was an engineering.
But also, yeah, but it was built on caves, so.
That should never have been built there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The cave, the caves don't come into play, because they're already gonna put townhouses or whatever else on that, so
Yeah, they've already had it.
That, that wasn't an issue.
People look at that, yeah.
Because it's good to do it there, but the school there, we put a lot of people there now, it's amazing, it's a big land there.
This is a sigh for you guys to know, the reason it was built there is because the superintendent at the time owned that piece of land. Here you go.
Alright then. Next question.
Are we ready to talk about vaping?
Yes.
We can go ahead.
Um, and I understand, uh, Laura and Derek have both asked for this topic, and Chris, you have a presentation in bedtime. We're, we're on a recovery track.
I'm on, I have doctor's orders, I have to get a good night rest, so nine o'clock's my bedtime.
This, this is an older group, man, this is an older group, we're getting real close to people's bedtimes around here.
Our focus is at midnight, so, right, you all in it.
That's insane.
No, I don't think we're gonna stay until midnight.
So, I will not, I won't go stand up front, um, because this is safer for me, but Jen's gonna forward through it, but um, what was requested at a previous meeting was for us to kind of start to look at um, recent legislation at the state level about land use control uh, related to the selling of tobacco, uh, nicotine, um, hemp products, um, which is vaping, you know, there's, there's a lot of things, but it's all about vaping. So we have gone through, um, the, the, the code status was, um, you can put in controls to regulate up to a thousand feet away from a school. Um, so we went through with our JIS staff and identified all of the schools in the unincorporated area, of course, this would also, could also apply to the towns, but they would have to do this independent of the county. So what I thought we would just do is just run through to give you a little graphical perspective, um, there's two maps for every school that we looked at. Uh, one is this aerial, so you kind of get a perspective of what you normally would see, and then the second map is pure zoning, um, and we call it color code zoning districts. Um, when you get into things that are, uh, highlighted, like reds and blues, um, primarily the reds or even like a maroon, um, those are gonna be districts that, um, do in some fashion allow retail sales. So whether that's general commercial, community business, uh, general business, or a planned district that has a commercial aspect to it, um, we just kind of highlight that. So the first, uh, school was Bellevue Elementary School out on Pepper's Ferry Road, um, that's the thousand foot from the property line. Um, and, uh, what's important to recognize, you know, there's kind of two parts, one is if you're an existing business, you're kind of grandfathered, we really can't go in and, and take you over and control that. Um, whether there's a business there or not, we're not saying there is, that's just the zoning that implies there could be. Um, and then what this would do ultimately is regulate a new business that would say, hey, you know, you can not sell certain things. But there's also exemptions, and I'll, Marty will touch on that a little bit, um, once I get through the maps.
But, but, I, you could say that, but the biggest exemption is if you have an ABC license, the ordinance wouldn't apply to you.
Unless you want to do it right now.
So if you're running a, you know, convenience store and you're selling beer and wine to go, you can also sell vape.
Right.
Save, and so we can't regulate that, you can regulate a vape shop that doesn't sell alcohol. Um, and I think we only have one planning thought in the county, and it's not anywhere near school, it's down at off Route eleven, I think.
Yeah.
Um, but.
Whereas the town.
That's the biggest exemption, so if you see a general, you know, like just a store you pop in to get, you know, something quick to eat or, uh, pick up at the store, convenience store, there, we're not gonna be able to touch that. And then any, uh, anyone else selling vaping products prior to the ordinance are gonna be grandfathered.
I'm gonna get some munchies while I get mine.
Yeah, so, and I, I'll give you an example when we get to that school, just as a, um, so that's Pepper's Ferry, um, next we go to.
Yeah.
No, you're at the end, sorry.
Oh, I went to the end.
That's okay, so we'll start it, we'll start back at the beginning, Prices Fork Elementary School, of course, on Prices Fork outside of town. Um, that's the aerial, and then go to the next slide. Um, there's really, really nothing within that thousand feet. Um, Walnut Springs, the very front of the neighborhood says that it could have community business, and then when you get into, um, more of the, the historic part of the village of Prices Fork, that red, um, those two kind of mustard colors, those are the two gas stations that are convenience stores, and if you've been there, they sell everything, biscuits, fried chicken, I mean, they sell everything in there. But I think what we're trying to kind of highlight is, you've seen, but that's a community business, they're selling gas, all kinds of stuff, and they also have some other retail products, um, versus, um, standalone vape, all the LED lights that, um, have certainly raised a lot of concerns. So that's Prices Fork, Shawsville Middle School, of course, it's, you know, well off of four sixty, um, kind of a block away, and then the zoning map, there, there is commercial, it's a little more, you know, in the, in the curve of Shawsville there, um, but really nothing uh, identified within that specific community, um, we keep going down four sixty and Eastern Montgomery High School and the, uh, elementary school.
It's a different.
Uh, is, there's really not a lot, um, there's a commercial, you know, business right just down the street from the high school. Um, and then the next one.
What, what are the little, little, uh, it looks like eight?
Yep, I can. The little, I, the little red ones on the bottom of there, I don't know exactly what that is, um, those are individual parcels.
Yeah. Yeah. Hmm.
So I don't know if those are condos or some kind of, something's making it.
Yeah.
These funky funny little slippers.
Could be trailers?
No.
But you can see how they're all funky lots.
They don't look like trailers, you know?
And that, the lot lines don't necessarily always
Yeah.
be, they could be some funky thing from a long time ago, the way they subdivided.
That, those are just different lots.
They're, yeah, I mean, I don't know why, we'd have to study.
Subdivided lots, yeah.
But they're just subdivided lots, so they show up as individual rectangles, that's not from the mapping. And then Auburn, which will be the example, but, you know, this one large campus, um, and when you go to the next zoning slide, uh, uh, it's really maroon, it's that planned unit development. But across the street from the school is a neighborhood convenience store that sells gas and a lot of other things. So those kind of things you would not eliminate, but the standalone or a new vape shop you would be able to regulate. I think that's, and then Bellevue, which we started with. So I think where we are is, you know, we've started the process, started to kind of looking at, you know, what's, what's the land use impact, how does it look on a map? Uh, we would have to formulate, um, an ordinance, it would be, you know, put into the zoning, then zoning would have the enforcement, uh, regulatory responsibility, you know, we as staff would have to, we kind of have our own little questions, like how do you enforce that? There's, there's certain parts that are obvious, and then there's others of, do we walk in and inspect the business? We don't, we don't do that today, um, and a, and a lot of things like that, but how do you enforce things like that? Um, and then Reno County is really kind of one of the first localities, um, they have adopted it, so we would, you know, maybe reach out to them and to say, how's it going? Um, I, I think the, the biggest potential is, is really kind of more proactive. You're sending a message and you're preventing future, um, conflict that you're trying to protect, is the primary thing, so.
Any chance we can just eliminate the flashing lights on any business?
We, we would have to look into that further, Jen, there are some signage regulations, but, um.
It's exterior, not interior, yeah.
It, yeah, well, we can't, we really, if it's inside the window, it's protected, and we can't regulate it.
Inside, the building.
It's inside, you can't.
It's inside the window.
Yeah.
Person maintenance.
If, that may need to happen at a state level, I was looking at regulations in other states, and in Connecticut, they passed something
This would be.
Yeah.
Correct.
recently about limiting like the glittery, the nuisance of those particular lights to, to sell these particular products, and that, that's probably the way it needs to go, the state needs to give the counties permission to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Enabling legislation.
Which is, in essence, what they just did to even allow this conversation to start.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Now, does that, does this open the door for some improvements to those?
Mm-hmm.
Um, or, uh, state rules, maybe, but at this point, these are the limits that we can do, so. Um, I think we have general interest and direction, um, ultimately we'll work through, you know, what the, there'll, there'll need to be like a board re- uh, referral to the planning commission to start a zoning ordinance amendment.
So is there kind of consensus from our board to move forward with that?
What, what are we trying to do, stop stores from selling vape?
No, ban vape specific stores within a thousand, uh, feet of a school.
Standalone vape shops.
Within a thousand feet of a school.
So if you ban this store here, them kids is not gonna go right down the road and get it?
They will, but.
I mean, really?
Makes them harder.
Those little areas.
It's not teasing them as much.
It makes it more difficult, they can't go right out of school and do it, I mean.
Really?
Mid, middle schoolers, middle schoolers walking a mile, seven thousand feet.
You think they're gonna have?
It's not gonna hurt. Uh-oh, just having less of them around. Yeah.
So you gonna stop somebody from opening a store because you gonna sell vape?
Yes.
Is this?
Within a thousand.
Dude of a school.
Within a thousand feet of a school.
Dude of a school.
They sell beer and stuff a thousand feet from the school.
Oh, it'd be nice to be able to stop that too.
They're much more regulatory on beer than they are vaping.
And, and they're, yeah, they're a lot stricter on.
I don't know that I agree with that.
I, I've, I've heard. Some places.
Yeah, I mean.
I, I've heard it all, man.
I'm a really kid, you know?
If they want it, they're gonna.
If you want it, you can get it.
If they want it, they're gonna get it.
They are, doesn't mean that we need to make it readily available to them.
That's right, uh-oh.
I don't smell readily.
Yeah, I mean luckily, in the county, you don't have these stores within five hundred feet of elementary schools.
It's for.
Unfortunately, in some of our town districts.
It's one of the issues, that's what I'm saying.
It, it's, what is it, three hundred feet from Kemp's Elementary?
Yeah. I don't even know.
So you're saying elementary kids going to the store getting banned?
Well, they are.
My.
Elementary kids.
Fifth graders, yeah, unfortunately.
Absolutely, dude.
Yeah, and people sell it to them.
You've been watching our meetings.
You need to lock them up.
Yeah.
But that sound like a parent issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and, uh, an issue with the people selling it to the kids too. Need to get those people around.
It's just more of a shot across the bow, like.
Get the start.
It's more of a shot across the bow, saying this is, it just gives it a little more teeth, even though it doesn't exist at all, it just gives it a little more teeth to say, this is what's gonna happen.
And you know for a fact that that store is selling elementary kids vape, you know for a fact.
I don't know for a fact that one is, that is correct.
That's what I was just, oh.
I said that people are selling them to elementary kids, whether or not it's the store that is three hundred feet away,
They're vaping.
I don't know, could be the eighteen-year-old kid down the street.
Cause I think the majority consensus from our board is we would like to be more with requiring of some permission.
That's all I had to present. Continue.
No, I'm talking about this, no.
And just a personal note, I hope that you're asking Christiansburg and Blacksburg town councils as well, um, to consider this.
So the, the town liaisons have this information, um, in another conversation that I'd had with, um, Vice Mayor Sutton, he has it as well, and he had set the base. They had some stalls along the way, so hopefully things are.
We can set the precedent.
Cause I really appreciate this presentation, one aspect of the, of the legislation is that daycare centers and private schools can also be included, and I I don't know the county well enough, but at least in, in the town of Blacksburg, some of our daycare centers are in commercial zones, so it could really have an impact of at least mitigating a little bit of the intensity, um, of those particular retail stores in our community, um, just, just wanted to, to mention it, that you can expand the, the regulation out potentially.
I think to comment that might help is, um, knowing the amount of vaping that's happening in schools, it, and not just what maybe at, initially from, from.
It, and not just what maybe initially from, for me, that I'm understanding, what it started with, it used to be, I, I think vaping started to help people quit smoking. And it's turned into now a recreational thing that has more, um, what's it, THC kinda stuff plus laced with other stuff. And THC in it, and fentanyl. And fentanyl. So, um, I don't think people understand the severity of how bad it can be. Even parents had to say that are buying it and giving it to students. So, you hit the nail on the head, a lot of that needs to be governed, but as we know with many other things, it's not needed. So, um, I guess it's a way to maybe bring about awareness to the community that how bad vaping can be as well. So, stop buying it for your kids, stop buying it for your younger brothers and sisters, stop allowing them to do it in your home if you should happen to come home with one, you know, Bobby Sue gives you one, throw it away. So, I think some of it, a- and you can't, you're right, you can't stop it all, they're just gonna go down. But hopefully, maybe it'll start raising awareness, just like with drugs, you know, ten years ago, fifteen years ago with pills, and, and the awareness grew, the educational level grew, to where hopefully that got a little more contained than it once was. So, maybe this will help with awareness and education for students to learn, yeah. Maybe I shouldn't do it, because it's bad, it's really bad.
Well, I think one of the things that's been mentioned about it too is how addictive it is.
Very.
And so, when you start at a young age like that, um, that's a, that's a problem also. And, um, I think I know when Marty Graham was talking to me about this, she was really concerned about that aspect of it also.
It's a simple, um, update, um, so SBE ten sixty was, uh, it was passed, and it's, um, by the General Assembly. And I was talking to, um, Delegate Open Shane, I'm pressing him, because they did add a component in there to set up a committee to study enforcement, um, but I pressed him about the issue that there is not an agency that's expressed, expressly tasked with enforcement, um, to, to, to ensure that there's not the sales to underage, um, to, to children. And so, there is still an opportunity that he may, Yonkin may, um, propose an amendment to, to the bill to, to actually put some enforcement in there. So, this, I mean, so this, we have this in terms of this legislation in terms of location, but there's more in the pipeline right now with regulation, because it's like the Wild West. I mean, we had, we've had a parent basically begging for a help, saying, I, I would, I would go into a vape shop and do my own undercover, uh, operation, because I'm so desperate. Because they're, they're selling to kids left and right, and there is absolutely no fear that their business is gonna be shut down. So, this is one activity, there's more gonna be, so we've gotta prepare for the fact that this is gonna be regulated. And so, this is just one step.
Okay.
Want to come up with that one?
Yes, thanks to the county for considering being the, the leader on, on this. We know it's not enough, but it's one thing with not, nothing, which is the only, all we have is discipline, we're getting some education programs.
Yeah, it's a step forward, so. The awareness piece, like Ms. Bond was saying, I just don't think most of the community, I think, knows and is aware, but I don't think they know to the degree of how bad, um, it is. And, you know, some of the kids we see, it's, it's always the majority of it. And, uh, sometimes I just wanna take the parents and do this, because they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, but sometimes, you know, we try to educate them too. So, you know, anything we can, whatever we can start to maybe try to get, you know, I would love if Christiansburg would just not let any just standalone vape shops come into town, but, you know, that's money for the town. So, it's a business thing. However, you know, just the standalone vape shops, like I'm counting, and I'm like, I used to never, wasn't one over here in the last how many years now, how many years there?
It's the thing, it's the trend.
And that's what, and that's what's selling, and, you know, they're, the, the town's profiting from any business like it would any other business, so I, I don't know what we can do to encourage them to hopefully turn those places away and maybe try to entice better types of businesses to come in and, and maybe hold out for that if possible. You know, I don't know, I'm talking, I'm trying.
So, if they were to hear the number of middle school students that we see in front of us for discipline, and it's related to vaping, and hear how the students have bought it on their own at middle school, and where else they're doing it, they're, they're not giving up. They would rather take the punishment rather than give up their source of where this stuff is coming from and how they're getting it. And it, it's gotta stop somewhere, because this is not just, oh, I'm taking a puff off of something, this is damaging their bodies and their brains, big time. As far as I'm concerned, they need to do the same thing with alcohol too, but they're doing more of this stuff than they're doing alcohol anymore. Think the elementary kids aren't doing it, think again. Six graders are doing it, it started in the elementary school.
I'm gonna go birth that Kipps elementary except for us.
It's not just Kipps, it's, it's, they're, they're getting it, and it has, it has to be regulated and enforced at some point, that these folks aren't selling this stuff, and when we find out who's selling it to them, then they need to go after them and start charging them and locking them up. For, it's, it's just like with, um, fentanyl and all these other drugs that were out there taking care of the prescription drugs, it's the same thing. These things are having some of the same reactions, the same effects on our students as those drugs did.
All right. So, I think we're at the end of the agenda. The only thing that we have left is to adjourn the meeting, and then also future meetings, which I think we've decided, um, we wanna do another joint meeting in June. Yes, yes, okay.
I got one question before we adjourn.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if some of the Blacksburg parents has reached out to anybody else or not, but it's my understanding the student was on a trip, and he broke down on a busy interstate in a bus. And it took a little while to get another bus to pick him up. Another jurisdiction, I think, had to come pick him up.
I forget exactly where it was or where they were going, but yeah, that, that's pretty common, and our transportation coordinator, Eddie Walters, they have a relationship with all the hundred thirty counties in the state. So, when we're traveling someone, we got an issue with the bus that's outside our county, they'll call, I don't know, Butchland County, if they're on the way out in sixty-four there, and they'll send a bus and take them there, and then we'll go fix the bus and pick them up. That did happen, I forget where, where they were going, but it's common.
Are they, are they, they riding the newer buses, or they riding older buses?
I don't know exactly what happened in that instance, if it was a mechanical breakdown tire, I don't know, but it happens. We got a hundred thirty buses, so they break down, even the good ones sometimes.
I was just asked to bring this up.
I thought it was handled well, I'll be honest with you. They took care of it, they, they had to wait about forty-five minutes, we had another bus come pick them up.
It was just concern because their, their kids were sitting side of a busy interstate.
Well, nobody can control that, that's kinda, I mean, that's just like your own personal vehicle. I see them broke down on the side of interstate all the time, it's, you know, people look, think the schools should be perfect all the time, and, and we're not.
All I asked was, was that a newer bus?
I can find, I'll find out for you, Supervisor King, I, I don't know.
Hundred thousand miles on them kids don't need to be on that bus going up interstate.
Well, we already got eight a year, so, and that's a priority thing that I guess we have to work at putting in there.
We can add that to the bus.
Where's the gavel? That was good. Now, we buy eight buses every year, right?
When we retire a bus, how many miles does it have on it?
I, I'd be lying, I don't know, let me find out. I don't know if it's down from there. I don't think a hundred thousand is a lot for the bus, that they could, they're made to get more, more.
Yeah, diesel engines should be lasting longer than a hundred thousand.
I'll find out though, I'll find out how old that bus was and when we typically retire it.
Well, thank you all so much for being here tonight, and I will adjourn the meeting for the Board of Supervisors, and that will be the process.
Uh, join us meeting at nine twenty-one. So, a little bit after your business, Chris.
I'm sorry, Chris.
It's okay.
Yeah.
I'll be late.
Thanks, everybody. Who's stopping recording?